I don't think, thank you Mayor Mayhew and thank you for second guess Chris. All in favor? Motion carries excellent disclosure of pecuniary interest. Seeing none move forward now we'll head into open discussions. I want to thank Nikki from the Glencoe Figure Skating Club as a guest to help us discuss a plan for the arena grand opening. Does anyone want to go first? I know I briefly introduced some of the ideas we were hoping folks would think about. Ashley, did you want to go ahead with some of the things that municipality? Had started on or ideas?
Um, I wouldn't say we haven't had started on anything just quite yet, just kind of discussing amongst our team. Kind of some possibilities and ideas and stuff like that. Um, we've talked about obviously like getting minor hockey involved and doing some sort of game. It'd be great if Glencoe skating could do some sort of showcase or something involving that like just getting all the user groups involved and showing kind of what they do within the community is really beneficial. We're more likely going to do tours, obviously, since the brand new arena. Um, yeah, I don't know if Alex has anything else you'd like to add to that. She's been very introductory talks on potential things that we could have and we're we're open to as many recommendations and suggestions as everybody has.
Yeah, I agree with Ashley and maybe just excuse me, see what ideas are out there and see what you guys are thinking of and then see how we can all put it together. Um, yeah, this because the rink's still under construction, we know that much, so. But yeah, I would, I will, I will kind of just pass the ball to Krista back again and, and let you guys maybe run with this a little bit, just to see what ideas you have and then we can have our input. Put in there.
Perfect. I had one comment come in that they used a traditional OPP high school versus the high school hockey game. And that was something that often used to happen. People would come in and to watch the game, they would make a donation of a food bank item and that would go to the St. Vincent de Paul. So then we have, maybe we can reach out to folks at the high school and the OPP to see if they'd be willing to do that again. Alan, I saw your hand was raised. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Krista. Thank you everyone for coming. If you've been to the Hockey Hall of Fame in Toronto, Ontario, you've seen the Stanley Cup. Yeah, but you, but in it also goes to the home of every hockey player on the winning team for a period of forty eight hours. In addition to that, the cup travels two hundred and fifty days to a year to charity events and NHL promotion activities. And I think that if we could bring the NHL cup to the Glencoe complex, the Southwest Middlesex Recreation Center. It would just pack the place. Recently, it is in London, just last week, there was an Islamic hockey player that whose name I forget, just brought it to brought it to the Islamic community. Yeah, and they, they have shown it and not only does that worship community enjoy it, other people have been coming in just to cast eyes on it. And I'm sure if staff reached out to the NHL in the earliest convenience, that might be a possibility. So the reason, I'm sorry if I cut in front of anyone there, but I do have an appointment at about two fifteen, I have to appear for a telephone conversation. But I would hope the committee might consider that. So if we could get the NHL cup, the Stanley Cup at our facility for forty eight hours, I think it would really be a good kickoff to the event. And if there's any comments on that, or if anyone can pursue that conversation, if you want down the road and the meetings to come, it would be great. Thank you, Krista.
You bet. And just so you know, I think that Nazim Kadri is actually coming to London and hasn't quite come yet. But I could be wrong, it might be a today or tomorrow sort of thing.
It's this weekend.
It's parade this weekend in London.
August twenty seventh.
Yeah, I have to know what day it was. Thank you for that. That's a great idea to see if we can request having the cup come for a visit.
Yeah, I definitely agree with Alan. I can spearhead that and see if I can find on some information. And we can see if we can move that forward. It might be a busy time of year for the cup too, just considering. But I do know that when they had Hockey, Hockey Town or the Hockey Town Canada and Stratford, where they had the cup there and that I know brought a lot of people downtown for that event too. So I agree with you, Alan. I think it's a great thing. Everybody does want to see that cup in real time. So I will try and follow up on that and see what we can figure out.
Thank you, Alex.
No problem.
Um, I know we've never heard from Nikki. Nikki, do you have any, oh, sorry, Denise has her hand up. It will go Denise and then Nikki.
Oh, okay. So we're talking about hockey and what about talking about skating as well with Tessa and Scott Virtue and really not that far away from the, from, from Southwest Middlesex? Like, I think that, you know, some kind of inquiry should be made to them as well.
Well, I know that Tessa doesn't live locally anymore, but Scott is still active in the local skating community in Elderton. So it might be something we can reach out to. And Nikki is a representative from the Glencoe Skating Club. She's the president of the Glencoe Skating Club. So maybe you can give us some insight on that, Nikki. Not like getting Tessa and Scott, but what we can do to honor the figure skating component.
Yeah, so I can definitely reach out. Our coaches, they would, they would know, you know, more professionals that are local. I'll definitely reach out to them to see if they have any suggestions. We do have some community members that I know Krista had mentioned alumni skaters. So there are some that kind of I know personally that I can definitely ask. They're still part of our community and they once skated with our, with our club. So it would be nice to showcase some of our local people as well. When we talked about showcase, obviously, looking at showcasing the programs that we offer. So just doing a little program with our pre-can and our can skate and our star skate. Each of those programs, just to kind of show our community what we have available, I think would be a good option. And then we do have some star skaters that probably would love the opportunity to do a solo during that showcase. Another thing that I had talked to our coaches about. Sometimes are not for the past couple of years, but we've done bring a friend to skate. Just a, an option there. I know that probably the committee has talked about just having free public skating. But what we have found just to showcase our skating programs is when friends bring a friend, sometimes they're more apt to, to join the, those programs. Other than that, I don't have too, too much to offer, other than just I'll, I'll reach back out to the coaches to see if they know any other professional skaters that may be able to do a solo during when kind of we have our showcase.
It would be, I was, Madeline has skated in Elderton with some of the Moyer coaches. And I don't know that they would be interested in sending one of their skaters to our arena. Cause that's always kind of tricky to be like, come and skate at our new arena. But I almost think we're far enough away that we wouldn't actually like steal them with our affordable ice time, but you never know, I'd be okay with that too. Um, but yeah, I will try and send that email out. I really want to give our coaches the first crack at it, if you know what I mean. Nikki, I don't want, like, I want them to be like, this is who I have and, and bring them here before we're like, oh, let's go to Elderton. That becomes tricky. There's a lot of politics in figure skating. Um, any other sort of different activities that the rec committee might be able to represent, recommend that we can do to bring folks in? I know we have some, oh, sorry, you had the comment, Alan. And then Christopher.
Thanks, Kristen. I'll be leaving you shortly. I don't think we should forget the New Horizon Group. We could have a Uker tournament or something like that as well, that day. And perhaps we can acquire a prize or something like that, or a shuffleboard tournament. Alex, I'm not sure if shuffleboard is going in up there, but I heard rumors that it might be. And so as long as we don't forget the, the, the older generation, I know they're looking forward to get backing, to get back into their home, the New Horizon home. And that should perhaps be some element of festivity or calling that we can bring them into.
Ashley had a response to that.
Yeah. So as far as I know, the shuffleboard thing is going back upstairs, like they're going to repaint and redo the floor for shuffleboard. So we could definitely do that. We could also have some sort of like, like senior fitness or something like that going on too as well. I could definitely have some instructors that I could get to come. And then obviously another thing would be like free sponsored public skate. So we'd be asking local businesses to sponsor some skates, I mean, Southwest Middlesex would sponsor some, do lots of free public skating that week as well.
It would be fun to add to what Alan said about the Uker tournament. We might say, okay, senior fitness and shuffleboard are some of the daytime programs. And then a Uker tournament could be something we do in the evening where everyone, you know, signs up and changes their tables and things like that. And some of it might be free, but some of it might be like, oh, there's a nominal fee because your fee goes into a prize. I, it's, I've only ever attended, I've never planned any of those. But it's just to get people like in the building kind of things, checking it out. And if the Uker tournament is successful, it might be something that the New Horizons decide to like move forward with as a fundraiser slash activity to get people participating in programs in the community. I love the idea of senior fitness or even like having some of our yoga classes happen and people can see that the chair yoga is happening. And when we talk about sponsored skates, we might be able to say like these fitness programs, oh, I think, I think I froze. Let me know if you can see me, hear me at least. I think I froze, so I'll go continue without camera. Even having some of those sponsored fitness programs as a reminder, this is what our program is like, you know, in our new facility. Just to try and drag people out, especially in January will be a nice time. Hillary, oh, Christopher, you had a comment. Go ahead, Christopher. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, Ashley brought it up already, so I'm good.
Thank you. And Alex, did you have your hand up there?
I didn't, but one thing I did, I was thinking of, I didn't want to interject too early here, but if we get a consensus of what activities we'd like to do, was there a timeline that you're thinking of? And the reason I want to mention it is, obviously, we'd like to get as many of these activities in, hopefully in maybe a sequential order. We are going to have new ice in there, so I'm wondering if you would want to stack the deck with figure skating one day and just play that? And stack the deck with games, and games and et cetera with hockey one day? Or do you want to try and mishmash this into one day or two days? I guess is the, the things I would want to know about on the arena side of it.
Um, you were a bit choppy for me, but I think that's because of my internet. And so I got the gist of what you were trying to say. I think it would be nice to sprinkle a little bit of both over both days. I know that for some of the figure skaters, we might want to focus the Glencoe Figure Skating Club on the first day. Some type of fun hockey activity on the first day. On the second day, maybe we can have different hockey. So whether it's the OPP hockey game is on the second day and the out of town figure skating talent or that kind of thing. Because I know as a parent, if I have, you know, two hours on Saturday and then two hours on Sunday, that can be kind of frustrating to have to, you know, navigate. Whereas if you could say everything with the Glencoe Skating Club is on Saturday, then the other figure skating components that we're going to share can be the second, can be second day. The other thing too was that I remember when Greg was talking, he brought up the idea of trying to have different activities throughout the week. I really love the idea of having some fitness programs happening while the skating is happening, because I'd love that to be our future. I'd love to see that on Saturday, the arena is hopping because there's two different types of programming happening at the same time. Because every arena I ever went to has that, has something else happening while my daughter's skating. Glencoe is pretty much the only one, well, Bothwell, but if this is a recreation center, I'd like to see.
Thank you. Just completely cut out, Krista.
Do that sort of, and that staff have of activities we could have throughout the week as like a grand opening week?
Krista, you're cutting out. I'm not sure if they can hear me or not, but we know it's just technical difficulties on your end. It's too bad that's happening, but you are, you were good before. That's the only malfunction I've heard. But yeah, we've lost you.
I can hear you, Alan.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, you're back now. You're back now, Krista.
Someone must have been driving by stealing my internet. Um, but yeah, so the last comment I had was just that Greg had mentioned the idea of having a grand opening week with additional activities happening throughout the week to try and encourage people to be in there. So I was wondering if there was anything the staff had as a suggestion of some of our ideas that we could maybe incorporate into week long events. And again, this is our first meetings, our first brainstorms. Please take these ideas for our community members back into the community and see if there's additional suggestions that we can get in that we're hoping to have week long activities. So what are some of those ideas? Go ahead, Ashley.
Um, well, I think, yeah, like we already talked about the, like having free skates throughout the week. We can do some sort of fitness, we can do shuffleboard through like Southwest Middlesex, we have stuff for it. Um, and the other thing that we could maybe look at doing is something to do with like cooking in the kitchen or like baking cookies or something, because it's going to have a brand new kitchen. So showing that off or utilizing that somehow would definitely be something to focus on as well. Um, because that'll be something that will be like ongoing in the arena once the arena's up and going.
Yeah, great suggestion. Christopher, you raised your hand.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, my one thing was what about, um, because it's being completely renovated, what about having tours up the facility once it's completely completed? For everybody to see what was done?
Uh, I think that's a great suggestion and I think staff had sort of talked about doing that, but we could potentially have.
Did everybody hear me?
Yeah, we could hear you, Chris. But yes, so I'll let staff comment on that one, but I think that was something they were considering doing too.
Yeah, actually just, I'm going to go speak with Brian, who's our site supervisor for the rink. I'm going to speak with him just to set up possibly a couple of tours so we can get tour in in the next, go through the next couple of tours. So you could kind of see the progression of the rink and then I know they're going to be working on more internal stuff as we move forward. So I'm going to try and get two tours set up in the next coming month, more or less, so you can see the rink and how it's progressed and then see it closer to when it's finished. So if you give me maybe a day or two, I'm just trying to line those getting, getting times and getting that organized for those tours.
Um, I'm going to go with Chris with a follow up question and then Denise right after.
Um, thanks Chair. Um, the other thing was what about, um, because it's grand opening, um, should have ribbon cutting cake? And maybe a PowerPoint of proposed activities for your own use? What's everybody's thought? Alex?
You cut out a little bit, Chris, but I will, I think I caught what you said with the grand opening. We can have cake and a ribbon cutting and everything like that. Sorry, could you mute? There's a bit of feedback on your end. There you go, better. Um, and so one of the things we did with the grand opening with the daycare is we very much had the dignitaries in thanking them. And we'll have to do that with the province. We'll have to have the MPs in and the MPPs. I don't know what kind of liability there is to be able to have a ribbon cutting on the ice, because that would be really fun and really cute. Or maybe we have like a red carpet we roll out because I really can't skate and that's low key embarrassing if I have to get on the ice, but I will do it. But bringing some of those people out is something we almost have to do. And I know it's something staff has been planning for. But it's great that we have the opportunity to bring the public in for this because with COVID, we haven't. What was your follow up Christian comment, Chris?
Uh, my comment was, um, instead of on the ice, do it out front, the ribbon cutting in front of, right in front of all that new glass.
What's staff's plan for that? I think Jill's shaking her head, yes.
I think that's a good place to have it as well, um, depending on the weather. Um, yeah, outside. Um, I would also, yeah. Yeah, Krista, I would also say just with the invitations, just as a reminder, and I talked briefly with Ashley about this and Chris. Um, so this was funded, so there is an invitation that needs to go to um, both the provincial government and the federal government to send their representatives if they choose. And they may wish to speak to it the same way that they did at the sort of the launch of the notification that we got funding, et cetera. So they likely need to have the opportunity to speak and the local MPP is probably the one that the government will send um, on the government's behalf, but the, the local MP is not part of the government. So if they are invited, they can't be invited to speak on behalf of the government. And then the only other thing I was going to suggest is maybe Alan can reach out to the Historical Society to see if they could help to come up with a PowerPoint presentation of the arena over time. And it could show on the new, the TVs in there.
Lovely. And that was something I wanted to have very little to do with the dignitaries of who needed to be invited and what order they needed to speak. Because we will need to have the county warden in, I'm sure, and whoever that may be. Um, and I was going to leave that to the staff people, uh, because they did it with the daycare for the most part too, and we still must that up. Alan, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Krista. Find my mute button. Yes, I'll certainly contact the Historical Society. I know they have some great pictures of the old arena that we can put on a PowerPoint. Everything from hockey to curling, figure skating and lots of carnival events, figure skating carnival events. Uh, but that, that'd be a pleasure doing that. I made a note of that and I'll contact Ken B. Kraft on that. And we'll make sure, I'll send an email out to him and we'll certainly attain that. I will be leaving shortly. Krista, I just wondered to, uh, if, would, would have, would have invitation of a food truck or a couple of food trucks over the weekend uh, be meaningful in the parking lot there, whether we have these people, if they wanted to get a burger and some fries or something? Or do you want to just let people come and go around our municipality and our business venues? But that's something that we might consider. There'll be kids there and parents, young parents. And sometimes a food truck might be, there are people that operate food trucks right through the year, twelve months a year. I'm not sure whether the Twisted Sisters do, but there are, there are.
Twisted Sisters doesn't move at nighttime, like they don't move in the winter, they winterize. My, that's a great comment. I think we do need to have some type of food there. Is there any way that we can showcase a vendor in our kitchen kind of thing to show people that, you know, it's commercial? Or we could have a vendor produce food out of our own kitchen and then they can eat it within the building? And Denise, I'm so sorry, we've missed Denise before, so I'm going to let Denise comment and then we'll come back to it because she was supposed to comment after Christopher. So Denise, go ahead and then we'll come back to food trucks and eating.
So I just have a few questions. When is the timeframe you're looking for in the new year? Is that correct?
January, yes.
So in January, so this will be weather dependent?
This will likely happen no matter what, but if we go, if it's raining, for example, it will likely be inside rather than outside.
Okay, so you're, you're making an inquiry into using food trucks. But you have some service clubs in the community that are struggling with fundraising. And I wondered if this might be an opportunity for them to, to step up and possibly, you know, make some extra money.
I think that's a great idea and that was one of the things that I was thinking about when Alan brought up food, that maybe we could showcase the kitchen and have, whether it was the skating club, the hockey, the service group prepare food and serve it within the, within the, the arena. That's a great suggestion, Denise. Uh, did you have any other comments that you want to?
The other, the other comments I just had was just the standard opening, you know, cut the ribbon, the dignitaries. And then of course, putting together historical PowerPoint, I think that's an awesome idea. So no, that, those are the things, um, my, always my concern is manpower and who's going to do all this stuff? So, uh, you know, I guess over the next couple of months, we'll sort of figure this out, won't we?
Hmm, and maybe we can ask for volunteers from the community to help with the grand opening. And I know we'll have most of the staff all hands on deck. Christopher put in the chat that he thought that we should consider fireworks at the end of the grand opening kind of thing. Um, I know that we could certainly have fireworks earlier in the evening because of the fact that we, it's so dark. Um, but I'd love to hear Jill's perspective on that. I know we have to have a pyrotechnician to execute them. And I'm not sure we would have a whole lot of people come out to that, but yeah, Jill, if you could speak to that.
Um, yeah, that's, you would have to have a budget for that, but I think that's a really neat idea. And I think it's worth exploring, but that is an expensive proposition to do fireworks that are kind of fun. So even if it's only for fifteen minutes, it's still pretty expensive. Um, so you, you might need to consider it from that perspective as well. And then if I could, just another comment about the kitchen and maybe Alex and Ashley can jump in. So the kitchen, when you're talking about the kitchen, which kitchen are you speaking about upstairs? Cause there, there isn't like a concession.
Yeah, there's no concession. Yeah, just the upstairs kitchen, like the one with the hole.
Yes, I, I knew there was no concession anymore. There's a concession like vending machine sort of setup, I, I believe based on the drawings, but no actual traditional concession. So it was sort of like people using it upstairs and being able to feed people from upstairs.
And I did see, I don't know if you saw this, Krista, or is Alan gone? Alan's gone. At AMO outside in the Byward Market, there was a pizza vending machine. Did you see that?
No, but I have seen a cake vending machine in the path in Toronto and that's amazing.
Yeah, I was like, that's, we should, we should look that up, Alex.
Yeah, you should, because then you could get the cake in the, in the vending machine and then the cake for it all goes together, the opening day cake and then the cake vending machine. We could customize it ourselves, you know?
Machine, vending machine cake. Um, did you have any other comment, Denise? Okay, Christopher, you had your hand up. Do you still have a comment or did we address it with the fireworks?
Um, no, I do actually have a few more. Um, Um, no, uh, I do actually have a few more. Um, the other thing, um, Krista was, um, to follow up to Jill's, um, about the fireworks, uh, is it possible to use the same vendors we have for Canada Day? For the fireworks, Jill?
I mean, that's your local person, so I would say they're most likely the ones that would be able to help out. Um, you just have to pay them.
Yeah. Um, the other, um, thing, Krista, um, was, um, this is just a possibility. Not set in stone, but, um, what a, what a drive-through dinner. And having one of our, um, amazing service clubs, uh, AKA the Lions Club, possibly.
That's a great idea of maybe having them use the community center for the drive-in dinner. The only struggle is it would definitely have to be like on the tail end or like later in the month because I don't know when everyone will get into the building to be familiar with the layout. Because the, I mean, unless they use the new Horizon Room, but I think they often put together their dinners and then usher them out the door. And being as the kitchen is on the upstairs floor, it does make that a little bit difficult for the Lions to kind of get all that food, so they'd have to sort of do it on the bottom. Um, but I think in the month of, the first month of the grand opening, it would be nice to do that because like you mentioned, Christopher, it would give them a chance to run a fundraiser. And even if people, like, people might be like, oh, I'm gonna pick up my dinner and then go to skating or go to hockey. Or at least drive by the new arena. It brings them into the parking lot, a different group of people who might not have attended the grand opening things. Feedback from staff, yes, Alex, and then Nikki.
Uh, just one thing I was just thinking of just in regards to that is if you wanted to showcase local, um, vendors or local, um, proprietors of food. If we're gonna run a week-long event and we have a more or less a prep kitchen. Could they, could we, could we order catering before and then have certain nights where we know we're gonna have events and have those catering people locally displayed? I'm just thinking Picasso, Red Rooster, um, App and Barbecue. Just an idea. It might take away from having the food trucks outside and people having to go outside and then we would have food available in in the rink that's from different vendors and maybe just stagger it every other day or it's just, and if anything, this is just an idea. So I just figured I just put it out there for you.
Thank, thank you for that suggestion. Um, Melissa, you had a comment. I'm gonna let you go first and then Nikki.
It's just kind of in line with getting like, um, local businesses involved. Uh, perhaps Tim Hortons would look to be a partner with some of our events, like maybe the public skating or family skate or something, whether they wanna like provide hot chocolate or they're wanting to evolve in some way. I think they would be kind of like a nice partner or like a local cafe if they're interested as well. Something simple like refreshment, that's pretty easy to accommodate anywhere.
Yeah, Let It Bree has the takeaway charcuterie sometimes and, um, go ahead, Nikki.
I thought I'd just add that the skating club has done the drive, like the drive-through, um, meals with App and Barbecue. We did it last year, so it is possible, but it is, uh, I understand the Lions Club maybe not wanting to, you know, it, it took myself and some, some of our board members to lug it up and down those stairs, so it's not ideal, but with the new elevator, hopefully you know, intact that it will be a much, a much better, so it, it totally is possible. I don't know if, um, uh, like the skating club, obviously we could look into it if there wasn't, um, another organization that didn't, um, wanna do that or whatever, but it is possible. It obviously to showcase, uh, you know, a local local food vendor.
We need to install a dumbwaiter in the arena. Just get food from the top floor to the bottom floor, just, just that purpose.
Just that person is really, really fast. Yeah, well, that's kind of like I, I, I vaguely, I was like, I know someone did it out of there and I was trying to remember who it was because I know it wasn't the Lions and it was the skating club. And I was like, I remember hearing about like 45 million trips up and down the stairs. So I was like, oh, like maybe that's why I had suggested the new Horizon like room, because at least it's on that floor kind of thing, but, um, and maybe this Glencoe Skating Club might be the right people to do it because they're like, oh, like we've done it before, we know what we're signing up for kind of thing. Uh, go ahead, Christopher.
Sure, um, I was thinking maybe the, um, Fair Board, possibly.
Yes.
The drive-through dinner.
They, they're a good suggestion, but, um, they do have their own building and I think we really wanna focus on if we can support users that use the arena like the Lions and the, maybe the hockey and the skating. Um, not the, I mean, if everybody turned us down, for sure, we could suggest it to the Ag Society, but I suspect they would do it in their own building because their building is a little bit not more accessible, but they do have all on one floor for their, uh, kitchen and workspace, so. Um, good suggestion. Thank you for that, Christopher. Is there anything anyone wants to bring up? Talk about, uh, Hillary's or anything? Go ahead, perfect.
Would it be possible, like, I know locally, a lot of people are really into having like a dance or something, just to bring people in to see that there are spaces for rent or you know, not just for hockey and that kind of stuff, some sort of like winter ball.
I love that idea. There used to be teenager dances in the bottom of churches and I mean, I don't know if Nikki ever went to one of them in Glencoe, but no. Um, I did, one, once. And I went, the girl guides put one on once as a fundraiser in the Appid Community Center and it was probably like the most awkward half an hour of my life. Um, so do we have space? Yeah, do we have space for that upstairs? I think that if we were doing a grand opening before the ice went in, it would be an amazing idea to do on our arena floor, um, but with the, uh, the ice in, we would need to use the upstairs space. The other thing I thought about, and this just came to me, I cyber stalked the Bothwell uh, Recreation Association and they have themed rollerblading nights and I want to steal all of them and do them at some point. Um, but it would be fun to do theme skate night, so we could do like an eighties night. So when we do public free skating, that's sponsored by, it's gonna be eighties night and everybody dresses with their big hair and they're like multi-colored tights and they get out on this gate, skate, and they do their skating. And the same could be, we could do a superhero night where everybody dresses as their favorite superhero and that's the public skating theme kind of thing. So it's not just regular public skating. It's like get dressed up, be a little bit silly and have a lot of fun. I like that, writing that down.
Stranger Things.
Well, I mean, we'll call it eighties for anyone who's not watching Stranger Things, but that's exactly what it is. That's where I'm getting all my inspiration from.
Lots of neon.
An excuse to buy more scrunchies.
There you go, leg warmers.
Um, this is excellent brainstorming, folks. I think we're coming up with some great ideas. If we could do a youth dance, I think that would be a lot of fun and it would be another really good one for a fundraising group, um, whether, like I said, the skating club's gonna make so much money or maybe minor hockey and, and to run sort of a, uh, a youth dance upstairs might be a fun idea, because you know, there's only gonna be like 25 people that show up. Or maybe there were more. I feel like there was lots when I was in Glencoe and 10 that showed up when I was in Apple. But
Didn't have cell phones then, so.
We did not. We didn't have social media. We didn't have cell phones. I remember talking about passing notes with Amy yesterday and I was like, this is how I used to pass notes back at school.
Yeah, when you fold those little things and they do like whatever, remember those?
Yep. Great. So if there's nothing else anyone would like to talk about, oh, Christopher, you went off mute. Did you have a comment?
We're passing notes on the bus, Krista?
Notes on the?
We're passing notes on the bus?
Oh, yes, exactly, exactly. Well, everyone, I think we've had a very productive first meeting. Ashley did a great job in sending out the Bumble Trumble, whatever the thing was for picking meeting times. I forget the name of it, but, um, I appreciate that and hopefully we can schedule our next one. When should we schedule our next one? Uh, around September, in about a month? Is that enough time?
Um, can I just ask a question? Pick the meeting date, but also pick which items you want to maybe, um, talk about for the next meeting so that, um, folks can go away and think about it and come back. Or do you want a summary of what has been talked about today and sort of flushing that out? Do you wanna draft agenda from staff? Do you want, you know, like what could the week look like, you know, things like that? Just so that for your next meeting, you've got, um, something to kick off the next discussion?
Love the idea of a draft agenda for the week with some suggestions and ideas of, you know, different themes and different activities. Um, and that maybe some feedback about how we've got, how, how we're going with the Stanley Cup and if we can, if that's, if there's a mechanism to apply to have it to come to our community. Any feedback we can get from our coaches about which skaters might be willing to be showcased? And which of our alumnis would be willing to be focused and see what their availability is? Um, and then finally, maybe the Uker Tournament component from the New Horizon, I think is a great one.
And then maybe think about after that meeting, how much money you're gonna be asking council for to, to do this.
It would be great if staff could come back with some ideas of what this is gonna cost, because I have no idea what is going to cost money and what isn't going to cost money. I think for the daycare, we had like a $500 budget maybe, um, so.
Yeah, ca- cake is expensive.
Those cupcakes were expensive and we only had to do it for like 25 people because of COVID.
So, well, we had about a hundred, I think. But, um, yeah, I think that if it's one way or the other, you either go and ask council for a budget and then you figure the activities based on that budget, or you come up with a bunch of ideas and say, we think it'll cost this much.
I like that version, come up with a bunch of ideas and think it's gonna cost this much and ask them for that much.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, so next meeting, it will be in September and we'll hope to have a draft agenda of the week's activities and a budget for the grand opening. Good work, team. Thank you for that, Jill. Ashley has a comment.
Oh, just another thing too, is to like make sure that we identify who's doing what. So, um, we have clearly roles and responsibilities. We all know what staff's doing and members of the, the committee's doing. We all have our own tasks and that sort of thing and can update each other on that.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Now, looking at the calendar, oh, where'd mine go? With the evening, I know it's not ideal for staff, but I think we might be able to get a few member, more of our community members um, with availability in the evening. Would we be able to do um, something at like five o'clock kind of thing, like we've done with some of our rec committee meetings? I know it, 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 then it ends up being just before other people's fall activities start. Um, I don't really, would, does anyone remember when the Glencoe Fair is? I don't have it in my calendar yet.
Um, it is September 23rd to the 25th.
All right, let's not have it have our meeting before that. Thank you for that. So, how does the 26th or 27th work for folks? At 5:00 PM? Did you thumbs up, Nikki? You thumbs down? Your thumbs down, Hillary?
Like, I could do the Tuesday, but I can't do Mondays.
Okay. Does Tuesday work for everyone else? Tuesday works for skating club, Tuesday works for, cool. Well, I can tell you that the meeting won't be a long one because I have an Elm Children's Center meeting at 7:30. 5:00 PM, perfect. Alrighty, uh, Glencoe Arena. And does that give staff enough time to do some of the whatever those things we said are today? They're called something. Objectives? Whatever. Um, okay, so hopefully that gives staff enough time. If not, they'll let us know and say we need more time. If there's nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting and appreciate everyone for coming out.